No, I don't want to say that. Okay, we good? Okay. Oh, here's Peter.
You alright?
So, I'd like to call the meeting to order, please, and our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic, the which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Great. So, has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes from October 23rd? Any items that you wish to change or comment on? If not, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 23rd, 2019?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, good. We now have our first session for public comment. Are there any comments from the public? Nope? Okay, good. So, now we'll move to reports for the school committee, so Dr. Antumuchi.
Yeah, well, my report tonight is easy because we are exciting, actually, that we are recognizing a Duxbury High School student, Jane Ellen Burnham, who is our only National Merit Scholarship semifinalist this year. And so, we wanted to recognize her, and Mr. Donovan is going to tell you a little bit about Jane Ellen. Thanks for coming.
Good evening, thank you. I'll move this closer here. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and recognize Jane Ellen. So, Jane Ellen is our, as Dr. Antumuchi said, she's our one National Merit semifinalist this year. So, they, just a little bit about that award. To be selected as a semifinalist, there are 1.6 million students who take the PSATs every year across the country. They identify the top 50,000 students nationally, and then they choose, they have a ranking system by state, and so, they choose 16,000 students nationally from that 1.6 million students across the country to recognize as National Merit semifinalists. And so, Jane Ellen Burnham, who's a senior at Duxbury High School, was selected this year, and we are very proud of her for this achievement and wish her luck. She'll move from here to a, she has another application to fill out, if the first couple weren't enough already. And so, she's another application to fill out, and they will name finalists in January. So, we want to wish her the best and congratulate her on her achievement.
That's awesome.
Jane Ellen, we have just a certificate for you and a little Duxbury, few Duxbury gifts for you. Congratulations. Do you want to take a quick photo maybe?
Yeah.
Is Donovan, do you want to come in too?
Absolutely.
You know, I was not lucky.
It's pretty amazing.
Thank you.
Just one, one sort of random thing is, this is prompted by Matt's question a couple of meetings ago about how residents can get notified about school committee meetings and other town departments. And Julia had mentioned that the town had a service that allows people to sign up for, you know, electronic notice to get a message anytime an agenda is posted, for example. And so, we sent a notice out, you all saw it, to the community last week. And as of yesterday, we had about 100 people who had taken advantage of it to date. And I think that's actually a pretty, it's a pretty good number. So, it's 100 more people who know that we're meeting tonight. I don't think they're all here, but maybe next time. But anyway, so actually, thanks for prompting that, and Julia, thanks for mentioning that. And it's really a nice service, so kudos to the town.
No, that's great.
Yeah, and they will also, if it's like the selectmen, they send you the minutes as well. If you're on the mailing list, they will send you not only the agendas, but also the minutes once the meeting's over, so that's kind of nice.
Just a quick question on that. Is anything being done at the moment to the site? Because when I, because when I got that notice, I went on the site, and it looks like the school committee pages, the ones I had given some.
It was live the last time I looked, it could have been, I mean, coincidentally, someone might have been getting there at the moment.
I don't know if people were working on it, but it was, it was like a whole list of sort of random kind of minutes and stuff on the homepage, which led me to believe that maybe people were making some changes to it, and they were like right in the middle of it.
I believe it's live, but we do access it frequently just because we update it, but I'll check that tomorrow and make sure.
Yeah. Might be worth it. Thanks.
Could have been Ukraine.
Yeah. Yes, exactly. Okay, Dr. Klingerman?
So, I wanted to share this evening. As you know, as part of our strategic plan goal of expanding vocational and school-to-career opportunities for our students, we will be hosting a Business Leaders Partner Event in a couple of weeks, on November 19th, at 3 o'clock at Duxbury High School. So, we sent out some letters today inviting some specific partners that have reached out to the school district in the past as being willing to partner with us. But if you know anyone local or close by Duxbury that might be a good and willing partner to at least attend that event and hear more about what we're hoping to create with that Alternative Pathway Program, please let them know and reach out. We can connect them with that meeting, but we'd love to have a lot of people come.
Could you send us a list of the people you'd invite?
Sure. Yeah. That'd be helpful. Sounds good.
That's great, thanks.
Also going to be advertised, correct, the?
Yes, I'm going to share with the Duxbury Clipper as well, but I don't see, I don't, is Matt here yet?
No.
Kind of with Matt as well.
Okay, great. And then, Mrs. Blake?
So, I just wanted to let everyone know that November is open enrollment for a limited number of our employee benefits that we offer here. And that includes our flexible spending accounts. For the retirees, it includes their health insurance benefit. And new this year for employees, we're offering a vision benefit that they can elect into. So, the vision benefit, it's 100% employee paid, and it will be offered by iMed. So, we're excited to be able to offer that new benefit.
Thank you. Okay, Hannah?
My report is very short tonight. Didn't actually write anything up, but I just wanted to bring to your attention that the, probably all already know this, the November 1st deadline for colleges is the same week as the end of the term. And it's like every single student I've talked to in my grade, they're just obviously under a lot of stress, getting all the homework in and work for that last week and college apps. And like, I also know the teachers, I talked to a couple of them, and from a getting in the letters of recommendation and all that standpoint, it's just something that maybe want to consider next year, doing the like schedule with the terms and stuff. Like, I know you need a certain amount of weeks or whatever, but it's something I thought I'd mention.
Thank you for that. Okay, I had just a couple of items. The Massachusetts Association of School Committees is having their conference. It opened this afternoon, and it's going through Saturday, so I think all of you will have gotten a mailing, but their website has an updated schedule, which seems to have changed quite a bit. So, if you're interested, they have a number of programs, particularly on Friday, which I thought looked to be useful. So, so I'm going to go down on Friday and possibly even Saturday morning. But anyway, that's happening. And then, the other item was, there are two district committees that are meeting. One on the 12th of November, which is the Professional Development Committee. Do you want, would you like a school committee member to attend, or are you?
That would be up to you. That day, we're going to be just working on the development of our professional development plan for the year. And right now, we're planning a menu-based social-emotional learning, Professional Development Day for January 17th. So, we're trying to pin down and finalize the offerings that we're having that day. If you aren't able to attend, I can certainly share that update at the next school committee meeting.
Great. Well, if anybody wants to attend that meeting on the 12th of November, there's a Google Doc, which you shared with all of us to just let Dr. Klingerman know if you are going to attend. And then, there's on the 18th of November, there's a Digital Literacy District Committee meeting. And I think, Matt, you had at one point?
I'm on that yet, 3:30.
So, are you?
I'm going, yeah.
Okay, brilliant. So, those were the only items I had. And then, Kelly, you wanted to talk about something?
Yeah, just about an hour ago. I'm going to go Friday, too. I go to the conference every year on Friday. I love the general speaker, and there's a couple of good. And I also have been attending the wellness, school wellness committee meetings that Danielle's running. The last one was small, but it was a good discussion, and a lot of it was around vaping, the vaping crisis, and sort of what to do.
Right.
Anecdotally, I have a friend who teaches in Waymath, and they put in some of the detectors, and it's just, it's constant text messages to the office. And then, they have to run down there and try to catch like whoever's vaping, so. You know, we talked about thinking about all the parameters around it, so. I'm sure we'll work on that. I just, there was an article about, it was titled "Why Kids Today Are So Rude", and basically, I took a few points from it. And it was based on some developmental psychologist and Common Sense Media report. Bottom line, it's screen time, and it's technology. And, you know, they're obviously accessing screen time so much more. And there are social skills that parents want to cultivate, but the screen time disrupts it because we're constantly, and pediatricians have talked about this since my kid who's 20 was young, and it was recommended no screen time before you too. But parents are stressed out, they're multitasking, and then the kids get stressed out. But the technology is disrupting the way that they're thinking. And kids are used to interrupting people more because of that immediate gratification. They're having a hard time learning how to wait. And I think if you've been in the classrooms for a long time, it's pretty evident. And then, virtual assistants like Alexa, they used to screaming at them, "Alexa, get me this and that", you know, so that's sort of another thing embedded in their psyche. You know, maybe to no fault of their own. And one of the pieces that, we talk about social-emotional learning all the time, was the kids aren't learning empathy, as we all did, or however you want to say, prior generations. And empathy is usually learned from parents, and the parents are so stressed out because they're working too much, and they're on their phones and they're. So, we see that in the schools that we're missing or lacking, and the kids are, through maybe no fault of their own. We've got to try to find a way to get that empathy piece. And employers for 2020, in the World Economic Forum, said kids who have empathy or how they're happy are more resilient, and they're going to look for people with that social skill. That's going to be one of the hiring requirements in 2020. That's sort of what they're aiming for. It's listed as an emotional intelligence. So, I know we're doing a lot of work, so our kids will be, be ready to meet that. So, I thought that was interesting. And then, there was another, they talked about e-readers, too, and how when you read on an e-reader, you're not reading at the depth that you do when you read an actual book. And there was another article this week, I don't know if it was the Journal or the, I think it was the New York Times, and it said how reading scores across the United States have diminished again. We've lost, we're down to like 35% of kids in 4th grade and 10th grade across the United States are proficient in reading. And that's pretty depressing. That's my good news. And now, watch of the budget.
Thanks for that. Okay. Any other, anything from you guys? Okay, so our one discussion item is the operating budget proposal, Dr. Antumuchi.
Yeah, so, we are excited to be here tonight and present to you the FY '21 operating budget. It's kind of the end of a long internal process for us, even though it's the beginning for us here at the school committee level and in the town. But it's, we're happy, we're happy to get this kind of presented to you tonight, and then behind us, and start digging in to the meat of it. We're going to, we're going to tag-team the presentation. I'm going to kick it off, and then going to turn it over to, I forget the sequence, but Danielle and Katie, we're all going to participate in the presentation. So, and we're going to stay sitting, which is hard for me, so I'm going to try. I don't like to sit when I present, but I'm going to try. Because it's hard, the, we don't quite have the mic set up right now, and I want to make sure the audio is clean, so. With that, I just first want to give a, sort of just a pitch, an advertisement for our document. And this document will be available to the general public via MailChimp message probably tomorrow, you know, perhaps Friday. But it's a really comprehensive document, and I just want to just go through it for people who might be watching. I changed the format a little bit this year. We created a, instead of doing a very text-heavy executive summary, we did a PowerPoint presentation that was a combination of graphics and text. And the idea behind that was really just to make it as accessible and as digestible and as transparent to the reader as possible. I hope we accomplish that. It ended up, it was, my, the execution of it was harder than the plan in my mind was, so. But I, I hope we accomplished that. So, that's the front end of the document. To me, that's, you know, for the casual reader, I think that's, that's the most important document. That's the must-read document, and I hope people take the 10 or 15 minutes it takes to go through that so they can understand what we're talking about. The second piece is the financial exhibits. We have six financial exhibits. It just kind of slices and dices the budget in several different ways, as I say here, and also in varying degrees of depth and detail. So, that's there for those interested. And then, of course, we have the line item detail. As it says here, we have almost 400 line items, we have 46 cost centers. It's just a, really a giant Excel spreadsheet. And it's really just provided to create the highest level of transparency that we can. I don't know if the average reader is interested, but there is plenty of opportunity to get as much depth and as much detail as you're interested in. And I think that's really important. So, I, we're kind of always proud of the document, but I think it's, I hope we accomplished our intended goal, which is to make sure that anybody who picks it up can understand it. That's really, that's really the goal. So, with that, this, as I say here, you know, the development of any school budget, I think, is challenging. This is probably my, I'm not sure, 23rd or 24th operating budget that I've developed in my career. And the reason it's challenging, as I say up here, is because there's always, there's finite resources in every town, and there's seemingly infinite needs. So, that always puts pressure on the budget development process. This year is a little more challenging because the town, the town set a guideline for all town departments, and they asked us to present a budget with a year-over-year increase of roughly 2.25%. And we'll explain why in a few slides, why that, why that adds an extra challenge to the budget. But we really thought it was important to meet that guideline, and we're going to come back to that. The town has a guideline for a reason, and we just felt it was super important for the school department to participate in that process the way it was intended. Third bullet here, you know, we, we truly do recognize the town's financial limitations. I think there's been some great dialogue in the last year and a half especially, and I think there's a high level of transparency coming out of Town Hall as well. And so, we acknowledge and recognize that the town actually has those limitations. And so, we worked hard to develop the budget that met that guideline. But we also didn't want to stop progress. You know, we wanted to make sure that we continued to move forward as a district. And, you know, we just completed a strategic plan. So, it was almost, it was even more important for us this year that we built a budget that helped us accomplish some of those goals, even though it was kind of a tight guideline. The other challenge was that, you know, there is some dialogue in town. You know, all, all town departments have needs, schools, schools are not alone, DPW, fire, police. There is talk about securing new revenue in the form of a, you know, potentially a Prop 2.5 override. Not sure where that's going to go, but we were tasked also with developing kind of a second budget in the event that we can actually secure new revenue, right? So, again, we're going to walk you, we're going to walk you through that in the presentation. So, anyway, challenging process. I do want to give credit, most of our administrators are in the room tonight, principals, central office staff, assistant principals, and they worked really hard this year. They did a tremendous job. They were creative, they were kind of problem solvers, thought outside the box. And also, they worked as a team, which is really critical in the development of the school department budget that actually makes some difficult decisions. So, I just want to acknowledge, acknowledge their work. So, I call this here the Tale of Two Budgets. So, all throughout the document, if you've gone through it, you'll see reference to, it's very simple, Budget A and Budget B. In Budget A, meets the town's guideline of a year-over-year increase of approximately 2.25%. I just want to point out here, we actually settled on 2.29%. We settled on that after our work about a couple of weeks ago, and we did run that by John Adams, the town's finance director. And he's very happy with that 2.29. So, we weren't playing any kind of games, not getting right to that 2.25. We'll actually show you later, we have some staff reductions, and there's actually corresponding savings in health benefits that more than offsets this tiny little $15,000 gap, but I just did want to point that out. And then, Budget B builds upon Budget A, again, in the event that there's additional resources. And here they are. Just a quick financial summary slide. Budget A, the town guideline, 2.29% increase. Our proposed budget is $37,783,809. It's about an $850,000 increase over FY '20. Like, all town department, I can't speak for all town departments, but I'm certain like all town departments, this budget will or could lead to service and staff reductions. Again, we're not alone, and we'll show you some of that as we go along. Budget B, wish I could point, but I can't. Again, it just builds upon Budget A, right? So, you see in that kind of orangey slide there, you have your proposed Budget A. We have $785,000 of additional, what I call growth and improvement requests, which we'll walk through, and that gets you to this proposed Budget B. And that has, as it says here, an increase of 4.42%, okay? This particular budget allows for more growth, allows for more improvement, and as I say here, allows for, I think, a more robust implementation of our strategic plan. And again, we're going to walk through these in detail. I've used this slide, or at least the concept in this slide, almost every year in my career. Certainly, the last two here in Duxbury. And it's just really background information or background knowledge for the community. And you've heard me say this, that it shouldn't be surprising for any community to see budget increases in the range of 3% to 5%. And I know that's a big range. 5% is obviously a little high. And there's a caveat, though, like if the district is to maintain the quality of programs and services, if it's going to continuously grow and improve, and I should have added, if we want to be able to respond to surprises, right? And some volatile or unpredictable areas, so. And we've seen some of those, and we're going to, we're going to walk through some of them. But this range shouldn't be surprising. And the, and the reason, and this goes back to why it was such a challenging year, you know, the reason is that schools, they're just not typical businesses. We're very unique organizations. Because of our uniqueness, we have many costs that are essentially fixed. Many are legally mandated, and many are just simply unavoidable. And I gave some common examples here. Special education, as you know, is by far the most volatile and unpredictable of all, well, school department budget lines. Although ironically, in this year's budget, which we'll show you, it kind of went the other, went more positive impact than negative impact. This is a new one, a new one for us, or a recent one for us, but vocational tuition and transportation. You all know this, but the town of Duxbury, every, actually, every community in the Commonwealth is legally mandated to pay for resident students who choose to attend vocational schools. As an aside, traditionally, that expense is covered in the municipal budget. It just so happens here in Duxbury that that expense is covered in the school department budget, which we've talked about at length. For many, many years, this is a fairly nominal amount and a fairly stable account, not so much recently. We've seen a massive spike in the number of students who are being admitted into vocational schools, particularly social vocational technical school in Hanover. And so, our expenses in the last three years have increased $331,000 in this category. We, we absorb that in our budget, all right? So, again, we didn't have a choice. It was unpredictable, it was beyond our control. And so, it's just, it's a really prime example of what I'm talking about here when I say why sometimes 3% to 5%, you know, might be an expectation. The, obviously, the huge one is salaries, about 83% of our budget is salaries, you know, education's a people-driven business. I will say this, we work really hard to mitigate those costs. Kelly sat on our negotiating committee last year, and I think we've done a good job recently of negotiating very fair and kind of competitive and comparable collective bargaining agreements. But nonetheless, we have, you know, 450 employees, it's a very large budget. That, those costs are going to increase. And again, many of them are essentially fixed or driven by collective bargaining agreements and just the market in general. So, that's salaries. And then, finally, you know, operations and maintenance and utilities. Our buildings, we house about 4,000 people in four buildings every day. We have about 600,000 square feet of building space, and it costs a lot to run that, and we have needs just like you have in your home. So, I always like to talk about this, again, just as a backdrop. And I'm going to turn it over now to Katie, because with this as a background, this year was no different, right? So, as we began our budget development exercise, we saw a lot of these kind of same themes emerge. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Katie.
So, as you all know, the creation of the school operating budget is an iterative process, and this year was really no different for us. So, the first iteration of our budget, or our starting point, is what we're referring to here as our baseline budget. And this is very similar to what we've referred to in the past as our level services budget. And so, for our baseline budget, we started with our current fiscal year '20 budget, and then, we adjusted each component piece, which we're referring to on this slide as our budget drivers. So, the major budget drivers that we find in school operations is, of course, our salaries. So, over 80% of the expenses that we're covering in the school operating budget are salaries that are paid to our employees. And for a large part, these increases are dictated by our contractual bargaining agreement. So, any of the cost of living changes that we're paying employees, any of the salary changes, whether it be an adjustment in columns for teachers or an adjustment in longevity, is truly dictated by those agreements. So, also, in being consistent with past budget cycles, we also did make some adjustments for retirements in this baseline budget. So, another piece of this, absolutely, that's so important to us, is tuition and transportation for our out-of-district students. And that includes both our special education students and also our vocational education. We also have to take into account any of the shifts or changes, increases and decreases in the operation and maintenance costs. So, included in this driver is our cost to operate and maintain our facilities and grounds, which includes some of our utility bills, general maintenance, and we do have a budget for extraordinary maintenance as well. We also look year-over-year at any fluctuations that we might see in any of our outside revenue sources. So, the gross budget is actually about 2.9% higher than our net budget, and that 2.9, I'm sorry, $2.9 million higher than our net budget. And that cost is offset by revenue from fees, from tuition, and it's also offset by federal and state grants that we receive. And then, we also have miscellaneous adjustments due to inflation, and some of the examples for that is our yellow. And some of the examples for that is our yellow bus or in district transportation. So we do have multi-year contracts that have a year-over-year increase. So we do have to show that as a part of our budget. So when all of those pieces were put together, the fiscal year '21 baseline budget totaled $37,993,809, which is just over a million dollar increase, or that's 2.86% increase over fiscal year '20.
Can I ask just a question? Because I think you had done a good job educating the community about what a level service budget means. And I'm just a little concerned about changing terminology.
I know, Peter, it's a good question. There was just, there was a few kind of nuances in the baseline. Like we actually did make some adjustments that I was in my mind arguing sort of weren't exactly level service, as tight as we've been defining level service in the past. So that was part of it, I mean, just very, very slightly. But I did make sort of the executive decision to use a term that was a little more kind of accessible to people. So I apologize if that maybe becomes confusing. But I just thought in this story this year, as we described how we built it, that the term baseline was just a little easier. What's happening, and what you'll see in a minute, is this budget basically just becomes irrelevant instantly. So whereas a level service was something that we were always focusing on as a minimum standard, in this exercise, we calculated it because we had to, and then we just had to move on. So the baseline budget, assuming that the plan goes forward with the town, won't even, won't even really be a discussion point. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, just give it some consideration, because I'm not totally sold.
Okay, that's fine.
I think as a reference, even though it's not, it's not relevant, because we don't have a 2.86% or 2.84% or 2.9% increase option. It just seems like it would be helpful to be consistent with what we've done in the past. And if the differences are really small, maybe just at least take it into consideration that it would be good to, because a level service also takes into account pluses and minuses, like anticipated retirements, anticipated reduction in something like our special ed or out-of-district tuition. So it's not exactly a do-over, but I think we've given the town two years of education to say what that essentially means. So I just sort of, just one thing to give some consideration to. I'm not, I'm not sold on that.
Yeah, yeah, I hear you. No, I hear you. Actually, we talked about it at length, and so we made it, we made an intentional decision. But yeah, I appreciate the feedback, yeah.
So this slide just gives more detail in how the baseline budget was actually built. And this gives more detail on the specific numbers behind the budget drivers that we've just discussed. So the first budget driver, of course, is always going to be our salary line. And you'll see the first drivers at the top of the screen are all increases to the budget. So the budget, the largest, of course, being our salary increase. And then we're also projecting an increase to our vocational education. So what's difficult with vocational education, as we've seen, is it's predictably unpredictable. So we're just not sure at this point, given the timing of when the students have to submit their final application to some of the out-of-district programs, what the number is going to be for fiscal year '21. The one thing that we're fairly certain is that we'll only have one senior that is aging out at this point. So we're expecting that we're carrying the cost of our students, of our current students, and then potentially seeing more students that are choosing to go out of district.
Sorry to interrupt, but remind me when the deadline is for students to indicate their interest?
So they are able to submit, they're initially submitting their letter of intent, and then the deadline to actually apply isn't until April 1st, I believe.
Right, okay, so you really have no kind of benchmark to go from, okay.
Although last year, it was close with like the kids who expressed interest early on. Or the magnitude was similar, right?
It definitely was, and I think we only had a number, a small number of students that submitted their letter of intent that decided to stay in district.
And the letter of intent is submitted when?
So they can submit that, they generally will start to submit that now. And they can submit that up until they've actually submitted their application. So another increase that we're showing here is operations and maintenance, and we're just projecting some increases to our water expense, some heat, energy and light expenses. And then a net increase in some of our supplies, equipment and contracted services. We also have some miscellaneous increases to some of our non-salary accounts district-wide, so that's any of our general account lines, whether it be contracted services, supplies and materials, instructional materials. And then we're also projecting to have an increase in our transportation contract that we have for Yellow Bus. And fiscal year '21 is a year five of a five-year contract, so it's the last year of this existing contract. So some of the decreases that we're projecting, or that we projected in this baseline budget. So we are showing a decrease in our out-of-district tuition and transportation costs for special education. So this cost has typically been on the top section of our budget build, and it's typically an increase. But this year, we do have one student. So as we're looking at this baseline budget, we're looking at the costs that are known and then just shifting that with any of the increases that are known. So any of the, as I said, percentage increases, inflation increases onto the next year. So if we look at our list of out-of-district students, we do have one student that would be aging out, that would create the savings in the out-of-district tuition and transportation costs, which we're taking into account in this baseline budget.
Could I just make a comment here? You know, this is, this is an example, and to the members of the finance committee who are here, you know, this is, this is something that none of us abstractly understand, because this is just one individual student, and we have no predictability ultimately. The town, I think wisely, has built up a special ed reserve fund, which we now have a positive balance, but this is just an example. You know, I've said this over and over, the 10-year average increase has been 6.9%. And the average state reimbursement for growth in special ed, so 6.9% compounded annual growth rate of the increasing expenses. And state reimbursement has been just, just over 3%. So there's nearly been a 4% compounding annual increase average over the last 10 years. So although maybe we'll have the benefit of this, it's, it's quite as likely that we could need to withdraw special ed reserve funds if our student population changes or the needs of our students that are served by this mandate change. So it's just one of those things, it's really kind of hard to imagine. But it's a big swing in our, in our operating budget, and it's something that's sort of, for most people, doesn't really, you don't realize it until you see numbers like that. And of course, that's not necessarily representative or average, but that's the best that, to your ability, so.
And I think by doing this, by saying that this, this is the known cost as of now, and certainly if we do have those increases, we would be able to use some of the reserve fund that we've been really trying to build up over the past year. But the reserve fund is kind of that one-time assistance to us, and then it's also going to create that gap in future budget cycles, so that we would have to fill the funding from the operating budget, and then it's going to show that, that pretty steep increase into the next year or into future years. So definitely something that we need to pay attention to.
That's always been my comment with our level service budget. For the last three years, our level service budget has been a decrease because we've been chasing costs that we had to take from non-renewable revenue sources.
So the decrease in the salary budget that's shown here, we've used this decrease in, in past budget cycles where we're accounting for savings from known retirements. And as we've done in the past, we took a savings from five teacher retirements. So that's a negative budget impact for us. We've also made an adjustment to reflect the purchase of the Chrome Bucks at the middle school and the high school. So we were able to decrease our technology equipment repair lines to better reflect our actual needs, given that we do have new devices and that those new devices are less expensive to repair. So we've been able to make that adjustment. And we also made a slight adjustment to one of our revenue offsets in that we are, would be utilizing more of an offset from our co-curricular revolving account. So there would be no change in the fee that's assessed to the parents. It's just that we're better, or we would be utilizing more of the revenue that's coming in over what we're utilizing in fiscal year '20.
Do we know we have five retirements, or are we guessing?
Right now, we have five.
We do have five, okay. And that's usually the number we used to estimate in general.
It's really tricky, too, because, actually, last year we had a case where people do tend to give their intent to retire notice by November 1st, because there's a, there's a small retirement incentive in the collective bargaining agreement, but it's not, not binding. So last year, we had at least one rescind. And so I feel confident in this number, but it's, it's a little unpredictable.
So as we went through the process to establish our baseline budget, we then took that budget to work towards building what we're calling our Budget A and then Budget B. So from the baseline budget of the 2.86% increase over fiscal year '20, we then had to reduce our expenses to reach the town guideline of the 2.25%, which we were able to get to the 2.29% increase over fiscal year '20. And so that required us to make an additional $210,000 in cuts in expenses in order to reach that town guideline. So similarly, we developed a second budget, and that budget built upon Budget A. So some of the cuts that we had to make in Budget A, we then were able to build and restore some of the cuts. And that is what we'll be referring to as our Budget B. And so that's our growth and improvement budget. And the total increase for that budget over fiscal year '20 is 4.42%.
Thanks, Katie. Quick comment about the final bullet about developing a second budget by building upon Budget A. In the document I sent you on Friday, there's a typo there. It says, "by building upon the baseline budget." I have a replacement slide for you today, but this, this is correct. So just, I don't know how closely you read it, but it's, it's kind of buried. But, alright, so with that, as Katie, as this visual shows, right? We, we kind of went to work from the baseline, we built Budget A, built Budget B. We're going to spend the next few minutes talking about Budget A, right? The 2.29% budget. So we set some guiding principles for ourselves as we began our budget development process in general, knowing that it was going to be a little tight this year, as I said, and not to be redundant, but I think it's important, you know, that we absolutely acknowledge and recognize the town's financial limitations. But we also felt it was critically important, as I say here, to keep the district moving forward, to make sure that we're addressing, you know, known and articulated needs in several areas. I just give an example here about our students' social and emotional well-being, which is, you know, all the way through the strategic plan and all the way through our conversations every month, it feels like. And also related to that, we felt it was important to, you know, make sure we at least started to implement a new strategic plan, or at least those things that might have a cost associated with them, because not, not everything does. So we kind of set some guiding principles, you know, to move forward. So to, to kind of accomplish those goals about keeping the district moving forward, you know, we had to make several difficult choices as we developed this budget. In the absence of no, new revenue, and as I say here, in this case, is actually a reduction, right? It's a little lower than what our historical average has been recently. We had to look inward, right? We had to look at our existing resources to see if we could free up any to accomplish our goals, right? And that's, that's a good exercise, no matter what. And I previewed this last meeting. So the result is that our recommended budget is this combination of cuts on one hand, adds on the other, and also some reallocations, right? So we, we made some, I guess to put it blunt, we made some decisions to cut some things so we could add some things. Does that, does that make sense? And that, that led to some difficult choices, which, which we'll walk through. So the sum, as Katie said, to meet that gap, the sum of all those cuts, adds and reallocations is $210,000. This exhibit, I'm not asking you to read, it's too small for the screen. We're going to walk, Danielle's actually going to walk through all of these, actually, in the next few minutes. But I, I just want to point out a few things on the exhibit. When you see kind of an accounting format, but the negative red numbers, those are obviously cuts, and we identify those as cuts. There's a lot of reallocations in there, and those come up as zero, right? Because we're taking, taking money from one pot to put in the other, so it has zero budget impact. But sort of both in terms of full transparency and also just explanation of our decisions, we wanted to list those. And then, of course, we have some adds there that are just, you know, regular positive, positive numbers. And so we, just another kind of view, we, just to reiterate, we took our baseline, which was about 2.86%, we made these series of cuts, adds, reallocations. The net, the net of those decisions were negative $210,000, and that landed us on this 2.29% budget or Budget A. And so we are going to walk you through some, all of these in the next few minutes. So Danielle?
Okay, so I'll walk you through some of the details about the positions and programs that we are proposing with Budget A. So we'll start with Duxbury High School. And this is probably the, the high school cuts and reallocations are probably the most complicated. And so I told Mr. Donovan, I might have him run up here at any given time if more explanation is needed. But the first proposed cut would be 1.1 FTE of teachers and also eliminating the district MCAS tutoring line item. So currently, we have a schedule committee that is working on creating the new schedule, excuse me, that was part of the contract negotiations. And so we have teachers and administrators working on the details of that. But that schedule will allow a flex block within the school day for students, which would provide students the opportunities for intervention services or opportunity to visit guidance instead of missing class time to do so. So because of that flex block, we will no longer need to offer the options course, which students have typically taken for some extra study skills and some extra time in their school day. So that options course results in us not needing to offer that, results in a 1.1 FTE of world language positions, because that is typically who has covered that options course at the high school. So that was the first proposal there. Also, because of the new schedule and the opportunity for additional intervention, we currently have $10,000 allotted for MCAS tutors for our high school students, which we will no longer need, because we believe that we can offer that support during the school day. Also, at the high school, we are going to be reallocating a 0.5 world language teacher and using that funding to fund a 0.5 computer science teacher. So lower enrollment and class sizes in world language classes afforded us the opportunity to make this reduction from the world language program. And currently, we are offering computer science as a course, computer science class for our students, but that is taught as a student-directed online course. And we have teachers in the math department facilitating that. So that would, that 0.4 would no longer be needed from the math department. Okay, continuing with Duxbury High School, we're also proposing to reallocate 1.6 FTEs from math, social studies and English departments to create math and writing labs during those intervention blocks. So our, this is where some of those declining enrollment... So our, this is where some of those declining enrollment figures start to allow us to make some creative changes at the high school. So math and writing labs would be available to students in grade nine and possibly grade 10, which would provide some extra support for students in math and writing. So this is still in development. This isn't a concrete framework that's been developed, because a lot of this rides on the details of the schedule committee that's working that out. But Mr. Donovan feels confident that because of these changes that will happen, because of the reduced number of students in some cases, and with that flex block, we'll be able to make these changes. Next, we're going to be reallocating a .2 FTE from PhysEd to be able to fund an adaptive PE course, and so this is another one of those zero-impact reallocations. So we have slightly lower enrollment in our PE courses that would allow us to take .2 FTE and offer an adaptive PE course for some students that would require that as part of their IEP. And so adaptive PE is just a PE class that allows students with maybe some gross motor weaknesses or other disabilities that impact their ability to participate in typical PhysEd courses. The pacing may be slower, and the instruction may be detailed or made accessible in a different way. So we're pleased to be able to offer that program next year to students who have that as an IEP recommendation. Okay, so next we'll move on to the special ed department. So we're proposing to be able to reduce two FTEs of instructional assistance. We don't know where those will be reduced from at this time, but what we'll be looking at for the remainder of the year is seeing if we can consolidate service, service delivery and maybe be creative with student schedules, allowing teaching assistants that are currently working with our special ed students to be able to have some creative grouping so that we could eliminate two positions pre-K through 12. We're going to look at all of our programs to see if that's possible. We want, that may impact the student groupings, and that if, if a teaching assistant this year was working with students and they had a group of two, and we have to make this tough decision, we might see that our small group support would increase slightly, but we're going to do this in a way that has the least negative impact to students, obviously, while still meeting their IEP recommendations. This is another reallocation next that's coming up, which is currently, we contract our BCBA, which is a board-certified behavioral analyst, and we also have a registered behavior technician that work in the district with students, and also with advising teams and working with our staff to train them to do ABA, Applied Behavioral Analysis, and other specific programs. So currently, we only have BCBA service for three days a week, and then we have eight hours of the registered behavior technician, and we believe by taking the funding, that $90,000 funding that we're using in contracted services, that we'd be able to add a full-time in district BCBA, that we'd have some flexibility with using across all of our schools as well as after-school as needed if families are in need of home support as part of the students' IEPs. So we're pleased to be able to increase the behavioral support that we currently have for families and for staff. This is another special education proposal, so we'd like to add an additional secondary team chair, and you'll notice that this is not a new request. This is something that's come up time and time again. But that, what, what has been noted, and we wanted to give our new special education director, Heather Tucker, some time to do an evaluation of our Duxbury Special Education Services, to be able to determine if we are doing our services as efficiently as possible. And she was in agreement that with a school district this size, we have three, over 3,000 students, the structure of the special education department is definitely challenging. So we currently have two full-time team chairs, and one of the team chairs does elementary team meetings, and our secondary team chair does all of the middle school and high school team meetings. And they have, as you can see, 386 meetings for 240 students at the secondary level. In elementary, our team chairs conducted 281 meetings for 220 students. So it's a lot of meetings. It's pretty much constant meetings from September until June, and we have difficulty fitting them in. They're difficult to schedule, and we're trying to accommodate parents as well as having the appropriate staff members present in the meetings as well. And the other challenge is that our special education director services a district student population of, we have 3,000 students, and she's frequently out of district at meetings for our students that are in out-of-district placements. So those are really important meetings, and typically our out-of-district students have really comprehensive, in-depth needs that we need the special education director or an administrator to be able to attend those meetings and make the decisions at the, with the team. So we're proposing that we would be adding that secondary, additional secondary team chair to have three total team chairs in the district, but we'd also like to restructure the team chair position, allowing that to be more of an administrative role, where the team chairs would be able to assist with some of those out-of-district placements, allowing Heather Tucker to be back in district more often. We have a hard time catching her for meetings because she's in and out so frequently. So if it was three people that were splitting those, it would, or four people, it would be more manageable. They would also, the team chairs would also be able to assist with evaluation of our special education staff across the district. So that's a multifaceted proposal with the team chairs, the addition as well as the restructuring of those positions. Moving on to Duxbury Middle School, we are proposing to cut .4 FTE teachers due to declining enrollment, and we predict right now that we'd be able to manage a reduction of approximately .4 for next year. It would represent a .2 reduction in STEM, .1 reduction in world language, and a .1 reduction in art. So although because of enrollment, we'd be able to make these reductions, it would be a little bit more challenging to schedule students, and we may see larger class size, even in the class sizes outside of this discipline. So again, this isn't an ideal cut, but this is one that we think, Mrs. McGuire thinks, that we will be able to accommodate with minimal disruption at the middle school. This is one of the add parts of our budget proposals. So Duxbury Middle School, we'd like to add 1.0 FTE, social worker slash adjustment counselor. We feel strongly that additional counseling and social and emotional support is needed for our middle, middle school students. And currently, with the structure we have now, our school psychologists and social worker work to support and service students identified as having specific social and emotional goals on their IEPs. So our special education students are certainly being serviced through our social worker and our school psychologists. But what we're finding is, in reality, there are many students not on IEPs and 504s that have significant support, that we are having to be really creative and often not doing justice to what services the students really, really need at this level. We all know that middle school is a tricky time for students, and it's not just students on IEPs and 504s that require support. We have many students with anxiety and other issues that are, or just going through a difficult time at home or personally, or just with the trials and tribulations of being a middle school student that we think we're missing right now. So we really think that this additional support person would be able to address those, even just mostly short-term and maybe sometimes long-term needs of our middle school students. Sometimes students might be on the radar screen of the staff just for a couple of weeks or a couple of months, and then they can kind of get back on track. But right now, it's a juggling act trying to accommodate all of, all of our middle school students' needs. Also, this is, we have data that shows that our youth risk behavior survey results, as well as our panorama survey results, show that the students are, are demonstrating this need. It's not just through observation that we're noticing that this is a severe issue. Okay, moving on to Chandler School. So this is a little bit confusing, but I hope I can explain it well. We're proposing to cut a .5 the half-day kindergarten teacher, that, that half-day program. But we still, it's a legal mandate that we need to offer a half-day free, not that we have to offer half-day, but there needs to be a free kindergarten option for students. So we're proposing to eliminate that half-day classroom. However, we will still offer free half-day, but the half-day students wouldn't attend the morning session of, in our full-day kindergarten classrooms. And Mrs. Weisahan, the principal at Chandler, is, is working out the details of what that would look like, but we believe, we've had a half-day kindergarten class this year of six students, and so we thought that we might be able to be creative in that we can spread the half-day students out possibly in a couple of the full-day classes, allowing them full access to the curriculum in the morning session while they're here. And then we're, we're thinking that the students that are here for the half-day would leave at that natural transition when the students go to recess or lunch, and we'd be able to continue on in the afternoon, not offering any new content when the half-day students had left, but doing some of the specials and other, maybe just other activities that aren't new content for the half-days, that the half-day students would miss. So currently this year, we have...
Sorry to interrupt.
Sure, go ahead.
Can you confirm what the full-day kindergarten tuition is?
It's $4,000.
$4,000, and is that anticipated to be the same next year?
Wait till the next slide.
So that's coming, that's coming up. And I don't know if that's in Budget A or Budget B, but we'll, we'll get to that.
Oh, it is. Do I have to, want me to answer right now?
$4,000 in Budget A.
Yeah, so it's $4,000. We are proposing in Budget B to reduce that by 25%. The plan there would be hopefully to ultimately do away with that fee, but you just can't, we can't do it all at once. It's a big hit. Even 25% is a big hit.
So currently, the total classes we have at Chandler this year is 28.5 classrooms. So we have 8.5 kindergarten classrooms, we have 10 grade-one classrooms, and we have 10 grade-two classrooms. So with our proposal, we would be eliminating one either first grade or second grade classroom and shifting that classroom down to kindergarten, so that we would have nine kindergarten classrooms next year. And we don't know, we're going to keep an eye on enrollment, so with this budget, we would either go down to nine first grades or nine second grades, and we'd have 10 in the other. So for a total of 28 classrooms at Chandler School next year. So again, there's some work to do with what exactly that model will look like, and Mrs. Weisahan will be in contact with families about what that will look like for any half-day kindergarten students next year.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
You showed the, how that will decrease the kindergarten class sizes?
Mm-hmm.
But is that going to increase the first-grade class?
Yes, it will.
Yeah, so last bullet there says it'll increase by an average of about two students per class, depending on what grade. So if it, if the cut comes from grade one or grade two, either one will have...
So I can tell you the...
Okay, so you're going to pick between...
And I can tell you the current numbers. So currently, our first grade class at Chandler, so our kindergarten class right now, we have 180 students in 8.5 classes. Our current first grade, we have 190 students in 10 classes. So that will be, either of those two groups will, will be deciding which would go into a nine-classroom grade. Moving on to Alden School, and I just want to say, as we discuss these, these were difficult decisions, and we never, our first go-to is never to raise class size or reduce classroom teachers. So we looked at any programs that we had, we looked at specialists, we looked at the music program and potentially delaying music instruction for instrument program, and we just, every time, every rock that we looked under was extremely detrimental to students, so we felt as though the less of the evils that we had to choose from, unfortunately, we're slightly increasing the class size. So we just want to say that none of these decisions were taken lightly. So again, at Alden School, we're proposing that we'd be cutting one FTE classroom teacher. So currently, at Alden School, we have 10 grade-three classes, 10 grade-four classes, and 10 grade-five classes. So with this proposal, we'd be looking at one of the grades three, four, or five would go down to nine classes for that grade level, for a total of 29 classrooms. And again, I'll share our current, and this is not, I'm not sure that this is exactly up to date, but I think it's pretty close. So currently in grade three, so next year's fourth graders, we have 206 students in 10 classes with an average class size of 20.6. With our grade-four students, we have 10 classes with an enrollment of 216, so our class size would be, is currently 21.6. So those are the classes that would be impacted in our current grade two, which would be going up to Alden School next year. We have 10 classes with an enrollment of 199, and the average class size is 19.9. And then I think I turn this back over to Katie again, mid-slide.
Yes. So at the district level, we are proposing to cut a 1.0 FTE, and that position is the assistant business manager position. So due to a recently reorganized central office staff, we're able to eliminate the assistant business manager position, and so many of the tasks that were previously assigned to that role, including any of the revenue collection, assisting with the transportation registration process, some of the grant financial management, and some of the data analysis will be reallocated amongst our existing central office staff. So some of the additions that we're also proposing for Budget A is to add funding to provide some Orton Gillingham training. So one of our district goals is to provide all of our special education teachers with comprehensive training and research-based reading programs such as Orton Gillingham. So in Budget A, we're proposing funding to train approximately 10 teachers in Orton Gillingham.
Can I just ask a question? My understanding this was a new state mandate, not a goal.
No, this is different. This is not...
The dyslexia screening was the new state mandate.
Okay.
And currently, we don't have a particular reading program that we train all of our special education teachers in. We certainly hire some teachers that have had that Orton Gillingham training.
Okay.
But right now, our special ed teachers are just using a menu approach on different programs, and we, we know that our, we need additional staff that have the Orton Gillingham training. We also have some of our special ed students that have to leave their co-taught classrooms to be able to get reading instruction in another setting from a reading specialist. And on top of that, we have a number of students not on IEPs that would really benefit from additional work and time with the reading specialist, so we think with this would be a...
So my question is on, in Budget A, did we comprehend the new costs that we have to incur to meet the mandate?
Not, again, it's a separate topic.
Separate topic. I'm just curious, do we, have I feel how much that is? Like, what's our district cost?
For the dyslexia screening?
Yeah.
I think that that is a generally reasonable cost, and I think we'll be able to budget for that using our Title I funds moving forward. It wasn't on the, in our Title I funding for this year, but moving forward, we can absorb that cost through our district grant.
But this is separate, but this was in the strategic plan. That's, that's a separate...
And so the last two additions that we're noting here are actually additions to, or increases to our offsets. So increasing any of the offsets is going to have the same impact as reducing our expenses. So our first increase to an offset is we added an additional, or we increased the existing circuit breaker offset. So circuit breaker being that reimbursement that we're receiving for our special education costs. So we're proposing in Budget A that we will increase the offset from circuit breaker by $75,000. So we're currently, in fiscal year 20, we have $800,000 noted as our circuit breaker offset, and so we'll be increasing that to $875,000 in fiscal year 21. We are also adding an offset, an offset from our food service revolving account. So the food service revolving account is the revenue that's coming in as a result of the expense for school, the school lunch program. So we do feel that we'll be able to take $20,000 from that account to offset some of the costs that we now have reflected in the operating budget. And so this, of course, is going to have the same impact as a cut to our expense accounts.
How much of a concern is the Alden cut? To, to add like two or a little more than two students per class? I mean, I, my son is in fourth grade, and I can feel the transition from third to fourth, the rise, you know, the, the higher expectations for homework and all the stuff that goes along with it, and I just wonder like how, how big a concern is moving from 21.6 to 24 students?
Yeah, it's not just Alden. I mean, we, we just went through a lot of cuts, like class size will rise a little in Chandler, it'll rise a little. I mean, it's Sophie's Choice, Matt, right?
Yeah.
So it's, I mean, from a research standpoint, it's not a huge concern. From a day-to-day, you know, classroom management standpoint and personalizing learning, serving all the students, class size is always, always a concern.
Yeah.
You know, but Danielle alluded to it. I mean, one of the options was to quite literally eliminate instrumental music in elementary.
Right.
I mean, it's, we would decimate a program, and so you make, you make those decisions at the end, and it's a horrible trade-off.
Yeah.
But we, we're not comfortable with it.
I think all of the, all of the cuts that we're talking about will have an impact on students, and so I think when you're looking at it as a spectrum... on students, and so I think when you're looking at it as a spectrum, the least dramatic impact on the students we have to make decisions on. So it's not, it's not ideal, and it's not anything we take lightly or that we wanna add. We also already feel as though our classes are larger than we'd like them to be currently, and so to make them even larger is not something that we're recommending, but, um, we're trying to prioritize where the highest needs are, um, at this point, and so that was the least impact of not great choices across the board when you're looking at this type of budget development, so.
Yeah.
It can impact on the teachers as well.
Absolutely.
That's, that's from a day, that's what I'm saying, day-to-day classroom management, it's having two more kids is two more kids, you know?
Yep.
Four more parents, too.
And the teachers work so hard to personalize learning and to get to know their students and meet their social and emotional needs, and if you are looking at twenty-two students or twenty-three students in a class, it makes, it makes a dramatic difference, um, on the day-to-day functioning of, of a classroom. But I know, we have fantastic teachers that do everything they can to make sure that no one, no one's needs aren't being met, um, but it is putting more of a burden and strain on our teachers, for sure.
Yeah.
I'm gonna move on to, um, sort of Budget B, right? This idea of building a budget that, um, can only be funded if in fact there's, there's additional revenue, you know, coming into the town. And so, uh, pretty similar to our guiding principles that we aligned in Budget B, we kinda put our brains together and, and developed this thing that we're calling growth and improvement, although I feel actually that Budget A allows us to grow and improve, too, so I don't, don't mean to imply otherwise. Um, this particular budget that we'll talk about now does keep us moving forward, um, it addresses kind of more goals that, that we've identified in the strategic plan, and it does allow us to avoid, um, probably shouldn't have said several here, a couple of the cuts, um, that are contained in Budget A, in particular that we'll show you, but the Chandler teacher and the Alden teacher. Danielle said this earlier, too, in a different, um, different slide, but many of these items are really not new either, right? In fact, most of them, if not all of them, have been identified specifically as unfunded needs in our, in, in our prior two budgets, in FY nineteen and twenty. So I think that's a good thing, right? I mean, there's, there's a, there's a reason why we start talking about our needs, um, every year, no matter, no matter what the funding level is. So I'll, I'll say this, though, I think this is really important, um, and this is in the eye of the beholder, but even for this exercise, I, I really will say that we took what I would consider, um, a fiscally conservative and very cost-conscious approach. I hope you'll agree, when you see some of the requests, that there really aren't wish list items. I think on the contrary, they're, they're very common positions that you'd find in, in most quality school districts, um, you know, in Commonwealth and throughout the country, and the positions that, again, we've articulated as needs for many years, but we also think we just need to, um, provide, you know, competitive, uh, learning environment for our students. So, again, it's in the eye of the beholder, but we really, we really tried to make it reasonable, because I don't think it'd be fair to the taxpayers to do anything but. Um, and so let's, let's go through, let's go through these requests. We're gonna go through these also, again, in more detail, but just again, the exercise, we started with Budget A, right? We started with this two point, two nine percent increase. The total of these new requests were, was seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, and that leads to our Budget B of, um, growth and improvement budget of four point four two percent increase. And, um, let's just, with that, go into the details again, so I'm gonna turn it back over to Danielle.
And this is a lot more pleasant for me to talk about. This allows us to, um, express what we know as educators that we need in order to, um, move the district forward and to be able to, um, take what we know about learning and teaching, and to, to be able to say, here's some things that would make a really big difference on the day-to-day operation of the school. So currently, um, when we look at elementary math specialists, we would like to add two full-time elementary math specialists. We currently have part-time, grant-funded, hourly-rate math tutors at the elementary school, and I don't wanna minimize what they do, because we're really fortunate that we have fantastic math tutors that work so hard with our students. Um, but they're part-time, and, um, there's a great need for math intervention at our element, elementary schools, and I know if you asked both of our elementary principals, they would say that we are only at the tip of the iceberg of how much math support is actually needed. We have reading specialists, and we know our reading specialists are a wealth of knowledge, and that's what math specialists are able to offer as well. Completely focused on math instruction and best practices. We'd be able to offer direct instructional support and intervention and service to students. They'd be able to provide our classroom teachers with coaching. We know elementary teachers are expected to be jack-of-all-trades in every content area, and, um, to be honest, you can, you can't be an expert in every single content area, and so if we see students struggling in math, we want to know every single possible intervention that we can provide, and that's where math, math specialists would be able to really be diagnostic and help the teachers, be able to make sure we're targeting the skills that will make the biggest difference. So with that, the teachers would have coaching available to them, and we'd have job-embedded professional development for our teachers, that we wouldn't have to wait for a PD day to work on improving math instruction, because we'd have that every single day in our schools. And I know, um, our teachers access the knowledge of the reading specialists, um, all the time. So if you have a student that's struggling, or if you just need some support with a student struggling with fluency or phonemic awareness, we can go to our reading specialist, and they can, they can give you off the top of their head a number of strategies and skills that you can work on in your classroom. Um, so it's just the benefits of that would be huge. And we've talked about this throughout the strategic planning process, so again, this isn't a new, um, need. We've also talked, since I've been here, about instructional technology coaches, and I can't say enough, um, we have great technology resources in Duxbury, but I think we're, again, we're only using them in, in pockets where we're being, really being innovative. Um, we have some wonderful teachers that are very comfortable with technology, but I think we're, again, we could be so much deeper with what we're doing with it, because we want the technology to actually change the instruction and not just be, um, a glorified notebook that's electronic. We don't, we don't want students in front of screens unless it's absolutely necessary, and it's, and it's enhancing the teaching and learning in the classroom. So, um, our curriculum reviews have shown, and just if you ask our teachers, we would love to be doing deeper learning with our technology available, but sometimes having a technology integration specialist or a coach to be able to co-teach a new innovative unit with you for the first time makes it a lot easier. That way, if you run into troubleshooting, you've got two adults in the room and not just one panicking because the technology was working great up until the time that the students were ready, ready to work. We do everything we can currently, I think our curriculum supervisors, elementary and secondary, work really hard to be able to fill this role, but on top of all of the curriculum work they're doing, they can't be curriculum specialists and tech integration specialists and do that job justice. So districts that have these positions would be able to, um, share the, many more benefits than I just did, but, um, this coaching is greatly needed. Again, they'd be researching best practices for us, technology is constantly changing, and so websites and resources that are popular today, tomorrow there's gonna be ten more out there, and so we don't have time as educators to be on the lookout every single day in researching the new programs that are available, and that's what these positions would do.
And I'm sorry, I prob, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
I probably missed it, but you'd see one in Chandler, Alden, and one in middle high school, or...
I, I think if we had two, I think it would probably be elementary and secondary that we would offer, um, support at both levels. They would be both at the elementary level, so...
Right, okay.
Yep. And again, job-embedded professional development allows for professional learning to occur, not just on the limited number of professional development days that we have. Next slide, we would love to propose a district social worker slash SEL coordinator. Um, this person would do, would, um, coordinate social emotional learning resources and support stu, services for students in and out of school. Um, we have, our counseling staff is working really hard to meet everyone's needs, but we have families that need assistance and support with even accessing services outside of school. If anyone's had to try to set up a therapist for their, um, child, they would be able to tell you that, um, accessing health insurance and even free resources that are ver, are available to families is really hard, um, and so we would hope that position would be able to be that liaison between the school and the home, in, in order to be able to have families accessing all the support services that they need, um, as well as supporting our teachers in district with, um, implementing all the social emotional learning practices across the content areas. And then the next position, district career and technical education coordinator. We're working hard to establish different pathways for our students to be able to retain in district, students that may be considering vocational programs, but also may really wanna remain in Duxbury to be able to stay with their friends that they've made here and participate in music and sports programs that they've been a part of. So we feel as though having a CTE coordinator in district to be able to help us establish this pathway in this program, um, to develop the business partnerships, to be able to teach the students in district, the skills that they'll need to carry out into their internships would be, um, an essential part of this program. So currently, Katie, Matt Files, Mr. Donovan, and I are working to get, um, look at some grant-funding opportunities to potentially be able to fund these positions, but again, having someone in the position to be able to do this as, um, as their main focus would be, I think would be, would allow us to get this program off the ground more quickly and have it be a more robust program.
So the, the safety of our students is always, um, one of our utmost concerns, so in order, um, or reflection of that is our proposal to add an additional school resource officer, um, which would be the equivalent of a one point oh FTE. So our school, um, currently has one school resource officer, um, that we're very fortunate to have, um, and that position is partially funded, um, by the town and the school. Um, so we're in Budget B proposing the addition of a second school resource officer. And so very similar to a, a, um, student-teacher ratio, there's also, um, an ideal, um, school res, uh, resource officer-student ratio, um, and the, the recommended ratio is one to one thousand students. And so our current ratio is one to, um...
Three thousand.
Twenty-nine hundred or three thousand students, so it's a pretty significant difference there. Another proposal that we have is the reduction of our full-day kindergarten tuition. Um, so our proposal is to reduce, um, the current fee that we're charging parents of four thousand dollars, and we'd love to be able to reduce that, um, to three thousand dollars. So of course, the end goal would be to be able to offer a full free-day kindergarten program. Um, so this, this recommendation is really our first attempt to be able to phase in the elimination of the fees. Um, and so we're saying that the impact to our operating budget, um, would be a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, um, and that would just be that elimination of the partial offset that we're now, um, taking in from the, the four thousand dollar tuition.
How much does that, there are six right now in half-day?
Six.
Six. So how much does that fluctuate year to year? Have you guys done any analysis on that?
I think the past few years, it's been anywhere from six to ten to thirteen.
Oh, wow.
I don't know how, if it's been bigger than that, Mrs. Weisahn.
Really?
Was that, was that four years ago?
Uh-huh.
So I think what you generally see as a trend is that as more families see success in the full-day kindergarten program, that they realize that their students can be successful in that, and I think when that was still a new concept, a lot of families were looking at their five-year-old and wondering if they'd be able to make it through...
Yeah.
...the whole day, and I think now most, more families are feeling comfortable with that adjustment, so...
Right.
We don't typically, we don't anticipate that that would suddenly increase, and if it, even if it did, we think we would be able to accommodate the students within the, um, the model Mrs. Weisahn is present, presenting.
Yeah.
So, you know, one, um, recommendation in terms of advice, because, uh, I'm not an educator, um, you guys are, but my understanding is if any of our Duxbury residents are disadvantaged because of the cost of full-day kindergarten and they are not able to participate, the likelihood of disadvantage to their students is quite great. In other words, early access has been proven to be very beneficial for virtually all students. That doesn't mean some students couldn't do just fine with, um, less kindergarten than ninety-five percent of their peers, but if a student in Duxbury can attend full-day kindergarten because of the cost, there's a, a reasonable likelihood that that student will be disadvantaged. I mean, is that...
Right now, currently, students who qualify, families that qualify for free and reduced lunch would also qualify for free full-day kindergarten. So right now, we aren't excluding any families who are interested in full-day kindergarten there, with the constraint of the financials, so...
Okay, that's good, okay, great.
And we'd also, we'd also consider if family had a particular hardship, um, temporary hardship or whatever, that we would take that into account, too.
Okay, good, yeah, good.
Yeah. So just kinda wrapping up, um, I'm not gonna really spend any time on this slide, but it, it's not surprising, I don't think, that a lot of what we presented in both Budgets A and B had, had an alignment, uh, were aligned to our strategic plan, and I just did this as a visual, sort of for your, for your review. So again, not surprising, but, um, but also kind of exciting, by the way. Like, you know, when we were developing this, it was kind of fun to go back, um, I guess they both feed each other, but it was kind of fun to see how everything, um, kinda came together in the budget and, and the strategic planning process. So, in conclusion, really, um, this is really, you, you know, the committee knows this, but just for the, for the public's sake, you know, the presentation of our budget is just, is, uh, is really step one in the process, and we've, we've now done that, um, tonight. Uh, and we presented two, two distinct budgets for you. We will meet, um, November twentieth, uh, and then December, and then December fourth, and so, again, for the public's, uh, knowledge, that's when the school committee will continue discussion, dialogue, deliberation, uh, about the school department budget. And at some point, you'll take a, a final vote that'll ultimately, um, be kinda passed through the, the town channels and ultimately, hopefully, to, to town meeting. I think very importantly, um, we are in, I think, more than ever, constant dialogue and constant collaboration, uh, with our counterparts, uh, on the town side, both, both, um, town manager and town finance director, as well as the board of selectmen and members of the finance, uh, committee, we've had some great discussions. And so over the next several months, really November to March, I guess, um, we'll, we'll have a lot of, a lot of discussion about the budget, but in particular, I wanna point out, next Tuesday, November twelfth, we'll be really doing this presentation again and having discussion at a joint meeting with the finance committee. So that's Tuesday, November twelfth, at seven PM, uh, at the senior center. So that's an important, uh, step in our process, and then...
And so how does that work? Do you basically, do we recapitulate this presentation to that committee and...
I'm gonna ask what they really want. Uh, we have several members here tonight, so, um, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure. And then finally, and again, just really for the public's, um, edification, that I, the, the most important step in, uh, budget process for any town in the Commonwealth is, is town meeting. Uh, town meeting is Saturday, March seventh, at nine AM. I've now, uh, had the date wrong three, in three different documents, I've had three different dates in three different documents, so it actually is Saturday, March seventh.
Yes, it is.
I have a, I have a corrected slide for the presentation that went on last week, and I messed up the one I sent to the, uh, community the other day.
Try to come to the right day.
Just show up, it's a Saturday, just whatever.
Not Sunday.
Thank you both for coming.
Not on a Sunday.
I just can't get it right, I mean, it's ridiculous. So, um, anyway, so, so, some final thoughts. Um, and these aren't that deep, but I think they're important. And, you know, first is that, you know, as always, I really do encourage, uh, any, any members of the community to engage in the budget process, and, you know, we'll, we'll try to feed as much information out as possible, um, to make sure that people at least are informed, no matter, um, how much they actually wanna be, you know, personally engaged. But I really do think it's important, um, not only for the schools, but I'd say other town departments as well, um, it's important that everybody has both the, the important, the information about kind of the implications of the budget decisions, but also that their voices are heard in the process, too, and that's, that's something you'll, you'll hear me say a lot. Um, I, I, I've literally said for twenty-four years on this job, um, because a need has gone unfunded does not mean a need has gone away, so no matter what happens in this process, um, we are gonna continue to identify needs, we're gonna continue to identify things that we think are in the best interest of Duxbury students, um, and if they get funded, great. If they don't, we're gonna go back to the drawing board and we're gonna, we're gonna continue to advocate, um, we're gonna continue to advocate for them, because they, they just don't disappear. In fact, as I said in my very first slide, there are infinite needs. I could've easily brought forth a Budget B tonight, easily, of three million dollars. And I mean, it's not, it's not even an exaggeration. But again, I, I don't think that's responsible, given the climate, but you could do it, and I could defend every single one.
Could I, um, interject?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not positive, but, um, my understanding is Duxbury has had one budget override since Prop two and a half was put into law.
Yeah, nineteen eighty.
This is, this is a, you know...
No, no, Prop two and a half.
This is a generational...
The override was...
This is a generational opportunity, and, and Dr. Antonucci, my concern is, the five years that I've been on the school committee, I believe we've been underfunded relative to level services every single year. I don't think this budget is aspirational, given the fact that if we are going to ask the residents of the community to support the schools with budgeting and funding sufficient to at minimum maintain level services, and I don't think that's, that's what most of the residents... the residents of the community want, is to maintain the status quo, but surely, we can't afford to continue to erode services. So, I think, I don't understand the mechanics, but if this, to me, does not represent an aspirational budget, that's a once in a generational opportunity to make a case to the community. If we were to secure a 4.4% increase for fiscal '21, does that mean we're right back to 2.9% increase in fiscal '22? Are we going to be in that structural declining? So, I guess my high level is, maybe you were getting directional feedback from the community, but as a member of the school committee, I don't think this is aspirational. I mean, there's no project-based learning investment to speak of. There's, you know, computer science and coding is going to be a requirement for most of our students, and there's a halftime investment in that. So, I guess I would just say, maybe you've taken the feedback, but I think if we're going to ask the community once every 30 to 40 years to go beyond a 2 and 1/2% mandated maximum tax increase, I would like to encourage at least a little bit more of a case for where the district could be in the future if we were given the resources, and not make the assumption this is the most that our community would be prepared to do. Just, you know, again, I'm seeing for the first time, so this isn't a warm-up. I haven't had the chance to give you that feedback in advance, but I hate to go to the community and ask and be right back in this position in two or three years, given the fact that we're not going to, I don't think anyone aspires to have annual overrides as a kind of routine way in which we do business in the community. So, given the fact that it hasn't happened historically, it's been 20 plus...
27 years?
27 years. So...
So, Peter, I think, yeah, I don't totally, I don't totally agree that it's aspirational, because some of these positions we're talking about are game-changing. They really are. I mean, it's not, we're not asking for $3 million, but instructional technology coaches, elementary masters, say what you want, they actually are game-changing for our teachers and our students, especially given that we've had lean budgets, you know, year after year. I guess as far as the number, I mean, I'm just trying to read the tea leaves, that's all I can say. I just don't know that we're there yet as a community to present a massive budget increase, at least right now, based on the dialogue. And I could be wrong. And by the way, I could build this, I could build on this by tomorrow morning, okay? So, if the discussion leads to that, we're absolutely prepared, you know, to kind of go bigger. But there's so many unanswered questions about, is it an annual override? Is it a multi-year override? Is it an override at all? And I just didn't feel comfortable drawing that huge, I just will admit this, I didn't feel comfortable drawing a huge line in the sand with so many unanswered questions. I mean, this, 4.42% in recent history is a lot of money for Duxbury. So, I will tell you, in my, in my professional history, the last time I presented an override, it was a 13 and 1/2% budget increase with 32 new positions. And so, I can do it, okay? I mean, that's, you know, kind of, I would accept that challenge. I just would say, and please give me a different direction, but I don't think that we are there yet in our, in our discussion with the town, just even about, about the override process. I could be, I might be 100% wrong. So, I'm just giving you an honest answer.
Yeah, I mean, I think, leading up to this point, we've never asked.
Yeah.
You know, when you look at the community, and I think if we broadly ask the community at large, not just parents, but the community at large believes that our investment in education is one of the most important investments we can make as a community, I hesitate to prejudge what the community would be prepared to do. So, that's just my reaction to this, is that, and again, I'm not looking for us to justify, but given the fact this is once every 27 years, I think if we're going to make an ask, I think we need to be prepared to advocate for where the district is headed, not just where we're going to be in fiscal '21, and then give some sense to the community of what the expected benefit would be. So, that's just my impression, is gosh, this is a heck of a lot of work to, and I'm not, I'm not diminishing that the impact that these things would make, but I just, I guess I feel a little overwhelmed, given this is a once every 27-year process.
But Peter, that has to change though, okay? And again, that's been part of our, at least preliminary discussions, is, you know, many towns like, like Duxbury, that are kind of rural towns without any commercial development, there is a culture in a lot of these towns where you are going, you are doing overrides frequently, because you have a structural deficit. So, to me, that's one of the options that we have to talk about as town officials and, you know, collectively, is to say, you know, we scramble every year, let's stop the scramble and maybe, maybe do a series of small overrides every few years if you want to maintain the level of service. But I'm saying this, like, that's a huge question. But if we were tonight saying the next time we're going to do this is in 25 years, it would have to be a different conversation. And also say this, it's late. And, you know, selling, selling a, I don't want to, don't mean to use this number again, but selling a $3 million override is probably more of a year and a half sell than a two month or three, a three-month sell. It's just too much information to get out there. So, again, we're, we're kind of in limbo, I think, all of us. And I think we're not alone, right? We're one of several town departments, but you've all sat in those meetings. No one has an answer yet, and it's November, whatever we are, 6th.
Yeah, I think it goes back to the discussion we had last year about revenue planning, municipal revenue planning. And we don't really have a clear picture where the town is heading and what their overall strategic plan is. So, we have a strategic plan, and John can tell us how much it would cost to implement it over the three years of the plan, but it's not clear, it's not been made clear at town level that a similar strategic plan exists. So, you know, when we have a better picture of that, then I think that it'll be easier to see where the school fits in. It's been my feeling that the schools, we, as a, as a department, we dominate town operations in terms of employees, in terms of budget and everything. But my feeling is that we, if we move, if the town as a whole wants to move to proposing an override, we will participate, but we won't necessarily, it's not necessarily beneficial for the school department to lead that. It should be an effort across all departments. And so, when we get a better read of that, then perhaps, as you say, you can, you've got your wish list and, or your list of unfunded needs, so...
Well, I'll give you an example, and I do want to just say a few more things, but I'll give you an example about the unfunded needs, right? So, kindergarten, if we really wanted to solve the kindergarten problem, that would have been, what's 18 times four, quick math, whatever, $700,000 thing, right? But that's, that's easy, right? And then you start, there are many decisions like that. So, that's why it adds up so fast.
I mean, for me, I would just, you know, again, not to be devil's advocate, that's just tax allocation, that's not programmatic. That does nothing for improving kindergarten. That reduces what some taxpayers pay and increases for others. I just think, you know, my experience is, when I talk to parents and say, we are in the bottom 20% of per-student funding relative to many other rural communities, and you look at the growth in prosperity in this community, the quality of services that our residents demand, and the expectation of the community, not the parents, I don't distinguish between parents and the community. I think the community expects our students to be prepared, commensurate with the resources in the community. I don't think being fiscally conservative and going to the community for an ask is necessarily going to, you know, do us a great service, because we still have this very, I mean, we talked about to get at median spending level was a $4.4 million increase in our budget. I mean, you know, if you look at property values in the community of Duxbury, there's been, over the, you know, I looked at the numbers from town hall, over a 25-year, there's been a 5% compounded growth in the value of property. The town is certainly more affluent than it was 50 years ago. The expectations, the demands on all of our services are outpacing the rate of 2.7 or 2.8%. So, you know, it's not, it's just, I want to just say, like, to do all the work and to get out there and to ask for an override, unless that there's real, unless there's a real understanding that this is something that's going to need to be done every year or every other year, I think we just put ourselves in a position, we'll be right back to where we were with the, you know, the population isn't declining fast enough to offset the growth in our costs. So, you know, as soon as we're not funded with some supplemental revenue, we're back in a slow erosion, and, you know, we can, we can manage more effectively, but that, you know, again, it's just, we have costs that are growing substantially faster and needs and opportunities to allow our students to be competitive. I mean, that's, I would say the residents of Duxbury that are sending their kids to the public schools at minimum expect their kids to be competitive. And if we're funded at a 250th out of 315 municipalities in the Commonwealth, and the trend is negative, like, we're going to be funding below level services, I think we're not going to be competitive. And that's, not to take away nostalgia, like, well, the schools were great when my kids went, or the schools were great when my grandkids went, or whatever. It's where we, where we headed as a district, so...
Well, I don't think anyone disagrees with you, but I think the really important thing you said a couple seconds ago was unless we do an override more frequently. Because to me, it's like a question of strategy. Both of you would probably agree that budget A is inadequate, budget B is inadequate in a lot of ways, and the community would probably agree that budget B is inadequate, based on what you're saying. So, to me, the question is, like, strategically, how do you get to the unfunded needs, let's call it like budget C? And do you make an ask for an override that is millions and millions of dollars once, and then go on the thinking that it'll be another generation before you do it again? Or do you incrementally ask for budget B that gets us closer to adequacy? Adequate's the wrong word, but you know what I mean? And then, you know, more frequently, go back and get to where you need to be, and not every 27 years? So, I think you guys are saying kind of the same thing, but it's a matter of strategy on how to get there. Do you know what I mean? I mean, that's how I'm hearing what you're saying.
Yeah, well...
Because I don't think anyone would disagree.
And I guess the thing is, is budget sort of presupposes that the answer is going to be, we're going to have to go back for an override again soon, right? Because the idea...
It's not under discussion.
There are just no answers. I mean, it's still...
Well, but the, but the budget assumes that, because the alternative is a bigger override, you don't have to spend it, right? You can increase your tax levy, and then all of the discipline of fiscal management is, still applies. You don't have to spend up to the expanded...
Well, so, that's a different model of Peter, which I love, by the way, because there was some discussion about going for a really big number. I'm partly making this up, but let's say it's a $7 million, let's, yes, say seven and a half million dollar override, right? And the idea would be that you would tap into that over five years, right? You'd grab 1.5, you'd spend 1.5, right, right enough, and that would provide huge relief for us for certainly the next five years, but also because things compound, you know, you'd be building your base, and so, in theory, you'd be at a much better, kind of much more solid position by the end of the five years. I love that model. But even in that model, Peter, we wouldn't have put forth $2 million worth of expenses in the school department budget, we would have put forth something like this, knowing that we'd be going back to a bite at the apple, yeah.
I, I would, I'd be supportive in the context of a plan, right? I'd support this budget in the context of not being back next year and being confronted with a 2.25% increase again next year. So, if you got 4.4 and it was one vote, but that expended all of the additional tax levy, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support this budget. I wouldn't, because it's just too much work to be back here next year. If, I think this would be a sound budget if the town anticipated a three to five-year plan to give the schools an opportunity to, to develop and to, and to do the things that are necessary for us to remain not just competitive, but more than competitive. So, I would guess, I would say more work is needed to be able to provide the context for this budget. But I think if it's a one-shot deal, it should be bigger, and if it's, if it's, if it's, there's a levy adjustment that gives us time over years, and the finance committee and the town can authorize on an annual basis, spending that we have to advocate for annually, great, but let's not, you know, I don't want to get here, go through all the work to sell it, and then be back to a 2.25 or 2.6% increase in fiscal '22. You know, because we'll be right back where we've been for at least the last five to 10 years. So, I guess the context is important. So, I don't know, how does that happen?
We don't have it, that's the thing. I don't want to tell you.
What's the timetable for having some context?
I mean, I think we're going to finance committee next week. We're, I don't know.
We've had meetings, I think, that the town has expressed that, the sooner they had the school district budget, the sooner they'd be able to make recommendations about what the rest of the year would look like. And we were telling them that there's just so many variables that go into this budget development, that we couldn't have done it a month sooner. And so, this is, it is a really early budget process, so I think now that this is out there and we can kind of have the dialogue, I think we should know sooner than later.
Right. So, I think our meeting next Tuesday is going to be important for setting the context, because finance committee is receiving the budgets of all the town departments, so they will have some idea of what their budget A and budget B are looking like. And then, of course, they, each town department must have a long-range plan for where they want to be in three years or so.
Because I would just say directional guidance, if 4.4 is what's proposed, we should give guidance that if three to five is too big of a range, it should be 3.5 to 4.5, or three to four for the next five years, just so we can comprehend that we're just not doing all the work and asking the community to provide the resources and just have to do it every year. I just think that's going to be too much work for everyone involved. So, if we could advocate that type of position, then I'd be very supportive of this plan, but it certainly would be nice to not be back here next year if an override was required to fund this budget.
Okay.
Let me just conclude, because I did want to just say two more things, and it's dovetail on that as second-to-last bullet there. I always like to tell people, anytime you make any budget decision, they do have consequences, I mean, and they're real, right? So, whether it's, and I think in our proposal, even in budget A, certainly in budget A, there are some kind of hidden liabilities that I think are important to articulate. Obviously, higher class sizes is something that is, it's also unpredictable, because you don't know kind of who's going to move in. We had to be less conservative across the board as we developed this, so we're taking more for budget offsets. We're taking a pretty big reduction in special education, which could, which could turn, which could turn overnight, restricted flexibility with scheduling for students. And I, and I'll say this, people are behind these slides. There are actual real people who we had to talk to today in anticipation of this, this budget coming out, and so, people's livelihoods are at stake. So, eyes wide open is what I just want to say, is, you know, when you make a decision, there are actual consequences, and we just can't minimize that. And the final thing is, and this is really what Peter was talking about, is, you know, we'll get through FY '21, right? No matter what, budget gets approved, budget A gets approved, we'll, actually, I'm kind of excited about budget, I mean, in a weird way, I know we made several cuts, but, and actually, we're kind of moving, still trying to move the ball forward, even given those, you know, the pretty lean number. But I am concerned about the future. I really am. And I, I use this analogy with a group of parents recently, where, as, let's take the example of class sizes. I equated it to when you're, as you're getting older, like, you gain two pounds a year, and you really don't think much of it every year, but all of a sudden, five years later, you've gained, you've gained 10 pounds. That's kind of how I feel, that's the direction I feel we're going, like, in the reverse, right? Where now your class sizes go up, one or two kids, okay, but all of a sudden, you do that year after year, and we're talking class sizes of high 20s in Duxbury, right? And that's, that's, that's an hard-won kind of situation, not to over-traumatize that, but you know what I mean? So, that's, that's, that's what you're saying, Peter, in a different way, but we obviously share, we obviously share that concern. As far as this exercise, you know, I, I'm taking the direction and trying to read the political climate as best I can, and I think we, I think we did our best. But yeah, I think that the conversation has to be about the next five years or 10. But, yeah, I think that the conversation has to be about the next five years or 10. So, yeah, that's it.
Just piggybacking on that, I, I applaud you, because you always work hard to try to move the district forward, but I am not at all excited about budget A with the reduction in staff, and we've talked about it, we already did it before at the middle school, we've dealt with union issues with too many kids in math classes, and I find it interesting that, and, and I think it's a great need being filled to ask for an adjustment council at the middle school, because that speaks to the population that we have nowadays. If kids can't come to school ready to learn and feeling comfortable and feeling safe or emotionally, mentally prepared, they can't learn. So, we have that need on top of the fact that now we have, we're going to have more kids in higher class sizes, and I just, that, being pragmatic, I see us getting budget A, because I haven't seen any movement for anyone going for this override in the town. We talked about this in the spring, and everybody said it would be a great idea. I've heard cricket since. Maybe that'll change next week, I don't know. I don't think everybody's super excited about an override. Maybe I'm wrong. It's the old Yankee in me, sorry. But I just, I am very concerned where the schools are headed. But thank you for, I mean, there were some great things in here, and, yeah...
They're different, that's why we, we let off, yeah, we let off by saying they're difficult choices, but I, I can tell you, the, the district leadership team thinks that, given the constraints, this actually is, is a budget that accomplishes, again, and meets the guideline, but it also really does, it does, it does advance us. I, I know...
It's a different kind of budget, yeah. But you all are, they all are in the trenches every day, so it's creative.
Can I, can I add just, I love numbers, but this is, this presentation, the format, the clarity is outstanding. Anyone in the community should be able to spend 10 or 15 minutes and really understand what the critical differences are between our current year or last year's budget versus what's being asked for. You very simply laid out the priorities. I think you did a great job with a hybrid of not a lot of words, so, so I just want to say, no discussion about understanding, because the presentation is so clear, makes it very easy to understand. If someone wants to get down to the level of detail, but recognizing, under the Ed Reform Act, the school committee doesn't have the discretion to say, cut this person and add that person. We're, you, you're an executive leadership team, so the town votes a bottom-line number for the budget, as does the school committee, so all we can do is give you guidance and trust your expertise to weigh these, but I think your rationalization, your clarity of, of the priorities, alignment with the strategic plan is like A++. So, so, really, thank you. I think, and I think it's something that everyone I encounter, I'll encourage to at least read the first cover letter and this presentation, because it's self-explanatory, so, well done, really fantastic.
Take some extra copies with you, and you can hand them out around the house.
Perfect, perfect, I will.
Supermarket.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, thank you. We have opportunity, well, actually, we have no action items and any correspondence or anything else, so we have an opportunity for public comment, if there are any public people who would like to comment at this time. If not, then may I have a move to adjourn the meeting?
You may. Move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.